This is a follow-up to our crisis response team's last meeting. And we asked some states and some organizations on the next steps and use that material to walk through this.
Yeah, so Natasha on Board Docs said we have a few things to do. One is the copy of the grant that we requested last time. We were able to get access to that through the portal after the award of that. And then the other three big takeaways that I took from you guys that you wanted to see were kind of a sample of a model. And of course, we discussed the Virginia model in our grant application. So we provided kind of a brief overview to you on that around a model for student threat assessment on that. The other big piece was what would be the kind of definable or identifiable next steps in developing a crisis response team? So we kind of have eight different pieces laid out for you there. And the other thing I would note on there that I was kind of remiss to include was again, making sure that anything you direct us to move forward with, you know, we'd want to engage you in that conversation around how we engage the community in that too, because we know that was a strong piece of this conversation before we would put anything in the process or any systems into place. We know that's a critical step. And then the third thing is kind of what would that crisis response coordinator do? And so you don't have a job description there, but you have a kind of a bullet point list of some of the things we saw as what would be the core functions of that work. And maybe just to draw you back to that conversation last time, three big things I thought we, you know, need to keep in mind and keep up in this part of this process is really what do we do in the event of a crisis? And so when we have these events occur, what's, what happens, right? What's the process? What are the protocols we follow? The second thing is how do we provide care for all involved? So not only potentially the person involved in, person or persons involved in the crisis, but those maybe less directly affected by the crisis event and providing wraparound care for really the whole school community or anybody affected by that, but certainly for those most directly affected. And then the third thing is what violence prevention measures can we put in place in our schools and in our system that lead us to fewer of these events? And I really think the other thing I would just say from listening to some of the community commenters and some of the conversations we've had, we're really talking about big crises here, right? I mean, I think that's where this conversation started. It wasn't for simple disciplinary events. It wasn't for even a student altercation that turns physical unless it infects a wide section of the school. What we're really talking about here and where I think this concept had its genesis was when we have somebody that threatens harm to the school, a mass harm event, or maybe a student that threatens to harm themselves, something to that level. And so I think that's something we'll want to pay special attention to about what are these teams used for, right? What are the events we would assemble this team and use them for? And that would of course come through in those protocols and procedures we've developed. So I'd be happy to walk you through those documents specifically. I know we didn't get them up there quite in time, but we've been doing this work in between the meetings and trying to get them out in front of you as quick as we can there. So I can either take questions or I could jump into dealing with some of the bullets that are listed there and talking you through some of those, whatever you would prefer.
Well, I assume we've all had a chance to read them, at least the grant was there earlier. The questions I have, I guess, are around, you know, the job description and the coordinator, right? Because that's, I think that's pretty critical, what they're going to do. And it's in my head, I guess, when you look at a bullet point list there, you, I put a number two on one, three, or whatever. And I'm going to assume that they're not in an order.
Yeah, there's no order of importance or anything that's given to you on that level.
You know, it's like the sixth one down or something is developing and adopting the crisis response process, right? And then farther down talks about, you know, collaboration with internal and external sources. I think those things in developing that process tend to be hand in hand and are much higher up than anything else. You know, the first thing on there being the, you know, establishing the team at each secondary school as the top thing on there. Like I said, it's in my head and that's at the top, so it's the first thing to do, which is not where it belongs, right? So I guess I would like to kind of make sure that whatever order these things get done are in an order that makes sense, right? So that's just really looking at a bullet list makes me remember in that way. So that's one thing.
Say it again, Charlie, you thought we should be number one?
I think we need to, you know, we have this coordination support. So when we're talking with the community agencies, that's like the 10th one down, right? Mental health provider, juvenile court, and things like that. And then the next one down, you know, is collaborating with our directors and stuff internally with the school. I think we need to do that collaboration with them to help create the crisis response process, which is like the fifth one down. What are the steps we want to see in the process and help us, you know, codify? When, what are the things that are going to rise to a level of needing anything? And I think the folks on some of those community agencies are going to help give input into, I don't think this thing rises to that level, but this might rise to that level, right? Instead of us saying, here's what we decided, now you help us figure out what to do about it. But I mean, I think even at the beginning, inviting them in and say, okay, help us decide what types of tiers we need or what levels or when we need to bring in this group, that group, or the other group. And let those groups tell you, this is what we do, so we should be involved if situation X arises. And I think that would be kind of the first role of the coordinator to do that.
Yeah, I understand, I understand. It can be kind of misleading when we have a list of things about which, which things are maybe more important than others to do first, which ones can't you do in isolation that you do while you're doing other ones, right? And probably paying attention to that as we do more, move forward with the job description, as we get closer to that. And then obviously, as we give them input on where they dive in, right? And where they start working on things. So thanks for that.
I would like to ask you to add in Charlie's suggestions that he had a community comment regarding keeping some, developing a plan for how, number one, you're going to deal with it if there is disproportionate and also how are you going to collect that data and have this person be responsible for that? So hopefully hiring somebody that would have some experience in program evaluation, something of that nature.
Yeah, I thought that was good too. You know, what are those regular reports out look like, right? So we're being transparent about how many situations we're dealing with? What are the, you know, what is our demographic breakdown of students and situations involved in that? Yep, we got that down.
So Matt, I'm sorry, I know you mentioned the input piece, but where exactly in the next steps do you envision that going?
Well, I think that's, for me, that was really what I wanted to hear some feedback from you guys on about if this, you know, the overall substance of these things looked okay, then I think we want to talk about what do you guys have for us in terms of expectations on how to engage the community in that regard? I mean, before we would move on any of this stuff, right? That we wouldn't want to move out in front of anything you want us to do there. So, I mean, obviously, this is one step in the community process, right? That we're having an open conversation, but there's more we could do with that and different groups we can involve before we move forward with anything. And so if you guys had expectations of what that looked like, we'd want to know those so we can move on that.
You know, I don't know if this is in here, you know, or what this looks like. But, you know, part of the transparency, I think, and getting the community buy-in was with these agencies. But then I'm thinking, you know, someone who's a liaison to community members as well. You know, I mean, this person is going to, it's going to be very important that this person is very well trusted throughout our community so that we can, one, build that trust, which I think takes a lot of active work. Having said that, I'm just imagining more work on this already very long list. And I'll be honest, like, at what we're paying, are we going to be able to hire somebody who can do all this at that salary level? I mean, I don't know, this isn't my field, but it, to me, you know, we're paying this person less than a teacher to do what looks to me as administrative type tasks. I don't know, I mean, maybe I'm off there.
Well, the one thing I'd say is we know that good community engagement can't be done by one person, right? And so while we might have a process and a point person for some of these things, and even if they organize a plan for community engagement, I don't think that just falls on that person, right? I mean, I think we all share that responsibility. Okay, well, how would we go out and do, you know, these multiple community groups that hit on several parts of our organization, who are liaisons to the community in different areas, where we have some existing relationships, where we would, you know, use people on our staff to do that? So I understand what you're saying. We have to balance the salary along with the work we expect that person to do, which is a real consideration. But I think there's also some, some of us in leadership positions that need to own some of that engagement with the community as well.
Yeah, I would have to agree that that part of being, I don't know if that's what you were referring to JP, but that community engagement, what probably needs to happen before we get to that hiring of coordinators?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, I just want to make sure.
No, 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 absolutely. I'm just saying, moving forward, just the continual, you know, because this is something that's come up, you know, not just here, but you know, go back to Special Letter Report, or you know, just oftentimes, that's kind of been issues, how well we can interact with the community. And the community that doesn't come to us, you know, we, you know, go out, you know, in our boundary work, I think we really saw that. Certainly that's the most I've ever seen sort of pressure community engaged. And I believe the reason is we went to their places. And they said, come here and we'll get 100 people to have a little bit or whatever that happened.
Yeah, and I think if you have a community meeting, you will have people show up and discuss this because the community's passionate about it. With this Virginia model and our other entities using it, are there any in Iowa that we can look at and talk with those people and get a read on what they have done and what they have learned?
We do believe there are some. Kate had just told me over here, we think Sioux City is actively using a very similar model, and so we can engage with them.
And they have a similar coordinator and things like that.
I don't know the details of theirs, but I'm assuming if it's based off this model.
Well, you know, I think, you know, many times we're always looking, you know, well, what are, what are others that are trying to do the same thing? I think that, you know, this would be no different. And I believe that the chief of police said he's going ahead with a threat assessment on his own, correct? I mean, with the city. So, you know, that's, that, that part of it is going to be, you know, kind of coming on anyway, whether we do anything or not.
Which my understanding of that, not that I've talked to the chief matter really well about this, but my understanding is that that's something that's happening across the country because there is, there isn't coordination of folks like from the school system to the college to the community where everybody is involved and somebody is followed all the way through. And so that community team in the police department would be looking more like following people for like decades, you know? I mean, not literally profiling, you know, one person, but recognizing people that might have a threat and supporting them and yet making sure they're getting the services that they need. But I think that it's, it's on a whole different level.
Right, and I remember being here at a joint entities meeting and having a very preliminary discussion about stove pop, stove pipe organization where data is collected. And I remember that Kevin Kenny was saying, oh, we already do that. As far as concerns in some of these tragedies where there were red flags that were not shared, like some, one group knew something about an individual that wasn't shared, but another group that could have helped provide the care assistance to try and prevent some of these things from happening. And so I think that, you know, that needs to be fleshed out. And, you know, as far as, you know, what, you know, what type of monitoring are we, are we looking at? You know, are we going after everybody's social media? Are we doing those things? I mean, I, first amendment person, I think everyone has a right to privacy that way. But you don't have a right to do, you know, you have a certain right to do things. But, you know, we, I think we have to be careful with, you know, how intrusive we get to that monitoring in the hope of, for safety and security.
I'm trying to figure out what's, I'm sort of wishy-washy on what's, what are the steps and the order of them? And so there's that, but I'm thinking about also the community engagement and how do we create, I mean, I mean, we need to kind of layering to help us through these early stage implementation steps to help us look at whatever kind of off-the-shelf model we might start with, to think, help us think through, how do we need to make some enhancements to it to be better fit for our community? I mean, I just, I feel like we need some help, I guess is what I'm trying to say, that I think we need to engage some of our community members who are super passionate about this, even in these early design stages. And I'm a little bit struggling about how to go do that. I mean, and I'm assuming we do this before we hire the coordinator.
Well, we have to have a job description because, I mean, we have these really great bullets that Matt developed, but it's sort of like, are all these things, to JP's point, realistic? That these are things that this person that we're paying can realistically do? What does this care team, like, department looks like? So developing, I think, a job description before we, and I don't know if we want to work with community folks in developing that, or should we as a board take some ownership to say, this is what the initial draft of the job description looks like? Then we sit down with our community partners and give feedback with them? Because sometimes that's helpful to go in with something.
Something to react to, yeah.
Right, I mean, I think part of this conversation got so tied to another part of the conversation we're aware of, right? That there needs to be some shared understanding developed about what we're talking about and then an opportunity to hear what concerns there are about those actual things we're talking about. And so that's why I thought with these three chunks, this would be even a starting point to engage those different groups that you were talking about. And so like JP was talking about, being able to go out to those groups, talk about it. And these three big chunks, we could take out a more well-defined job description if we think that would be helpful, you know, after you guys have seen it. And then we could really engage with them and talk about what is crisis response, right? What are we talking about? What are these chunks this person would be doing? What these teams would be doing, you know, and having a conversation and then bringing that feedback back to say, well, this is what we heard from our groups, kind of in an aggregate form, and how we've tried to respond accordingly.
Yeah, I think that is, that sounds right. We need to kind of take this out and have that conversation for exactly the reason that this has been caught up in other things and we want to have a clear conversation about this. And the other thing I'd like to do without going too much further forward is somehow connect us with these districts that have done it. So what did it look like? What process did they go through? What, you know, I think that's going to have, just so we're not commencing with L. And looking at, you know, certainly in the state, but then even reaching out to other, you know, districts like, I mean, Sioux Cities like us in some ways, but then in other ways, you know, so these midwestern college town, similar size, similar demographics. Are there any, you know, what's Lincoln doing or what's?
Yeah, I mean, I think they just went to Lincoln, okay, didn't you? Because I met with secondary building principals and they talked about those care people using the Virginia model. So I think having that, did we get a report back on that? Sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off.
No, well, that's, yeah, we've been engaging with Lincoln in conversations before. I think Madison is somewhat of another likes, I mean, they're larger than us, but they're also a district that, you know, would have some of the same context pieces as us. I think we could identify those. We could probably run that hand in hand while we're also engaging the community, looking at other models and how they've implemented it. And then we could have an informed conversation about moving forward and what are all those things we learned.
And then my question is around the models. Are there implementation steps that go along with these models? Or are they, like, how do you, I mean, how do you build one of these response teams? And how do they go through, what's the process that people go through? Like Sandy Hook, they have like an implementation plan that just?
Yeah, I mean, there's elements of, you know, these different things about crisis response because, you know, the crisis response team is kind of the, you know, a team that's going to do multiple things, as we've talked about here, right? One of them might be that it's simple to look at an actual crisis and figure out how we deal with the crisis, you know, avoid any harm and then provide care. The other thing might be implementing those violence prevention, you know, initiatives in school. Those are things, whether we do this, you know, or not, or whatever, I mean, are good things, you know, that we're kind of moving on. I mean, with some of that Sandy Hook piece or with the MVP training we've been to, you know, the Mentors Against, for Violence Prevention Training that is kind of that crosswalk with the STOP grant portion. So, I mean, I think there's things like that Janet that are just good practice things that are like curricular or teaching and learning focuses that ties into these things. But the actual like assembly of a team because we've had a threat, I think those are probably some of the steps we'd want to learn from another district about, okay, well, how did you go about entering into this and say, now we're doing it, right? Now we're, now we're implementing our response process. So I don't have a great answer, but I'd say I think I know where to go get one, right? I think we could go talk to them, figure out what are the steps you took to do it? Meanwhile, we can be engaged in the community about what our general concept is and.
There's an actual manual too.
I'll go somewhere and talk to somebody. I mean, I just think I'd rather try and hear the words directly, right? And ask the questions that I have to ask of somebody, you know, other board members would want to do that or not. Maybe it's, I don't know, pay to do it, so I just want to do it, so.
You can say something, Kate.
Well, there is a manual that, there's a, there's a, there's an entire 12-chapter manual on how to implement this assessment, Comprehensive School Assessment Guidelines. It's a starting point to take a look at.
Well, one other, one other thing that may be helpful too is if you have in our discussion with our community partners, if you have like some examples and say that an individual at this school in that municipality is identified with a, in need of mental counseling or assistance, what agency would you go to? What would be the supports in the school? What would be the supports from the community? You know, what were you, what are you expecting? Identifying the problem is the first thing, or identifying the need, the care. The other is getting the care to the individual that needs it and making sure that, you know, that it's met and it's followed through.
Yeah, definitely. I mean, what I'm hearing, kind of just to summarize, some of the next steps are the community agencies. And I think this is just kind of the one Phil's talking about here about, okay, when we connect with them, you know, once we know the problem, then we have responsibility to fix the problem, right? So how can we connect them to services and what goal do our community partners play in that? What services do we provide in the district? Liaison to those community groups, and I liked how JP had referenced the model of the boundaries, right? What are all those groups and how do we make sure we get out to those groups? Phil had talked about the value of the community meeting, you know, and so probably doing the community input in some multiple forms. And then researching what other districts, you know, have implemented and how that's went. And so the one thing I should probably throw out and, you know, that Phil did bring up that I think is important just to have out there and be aware of, you know, part of this does talk about monitoring an alert system. And, you know, students do have a right to privacy. That right to privacy on school equipment is different than if they're using their own equipment. We do have the ability to look in their Google Drive and their email and things like that. And I know there's a risk that comes with that. But I also think the other side of it is if you were a parent and your student had something on their email or had something on their Google Drive that were threats of harm to themselves or the school community, you would want an opportunity to be able to have that conversation with your child, right? And you'd want to be able to hope that adults around them can intervene before something terrible happened. And so if we have the ability to do that, I think we need to have the courage to have the conversation and say, how does that look? Right? And how, how can we build some norms around how we're going to do that? How we're not going to overdo that, you know, to be looking for things that, you know, aren't really what we're trying to catch. What we're trying to catch is prevent people from really harming themselves or harming other people.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, that's where, that's where my questions are. Are we going to profile what books they read, you know, what, what the?
I don't have the time or interest to do that, Phil.
Well, but, no, I think electronically, electronically, you don't even have to do it. You could target certain, you know, you, it could easily be targeting some, some literature that, you know, gets a certain score. And when someone starts reading some material that, you know, maybe that puts them on a, on a high check.
So who, I assume there are people, right, who do this and they're experts. I mean, I think I'd like to hear like how, because the other thing I'd say other than harm yourself or others is cyberbullying. And you want to know when that's happening. And I tell you, you know, I frankly get sick when school districts are like, not on school property, not our concern. I don't believe that. I believe that if our kids are bullying one another and we find out about it, that we have a responsibility. But you got to balance that because that's, you know, when I deal with this, you know, that, that, you run into that. Like our hands are tied kind of a thing. So I, I mean, there's all, but that balance between privacy and First Amendment rights and safety is sometimes a really delicate balance. I think we, I appreciate that we have to be able to have that conversation and be really honest.
And the best thing might be to include somebody that does do that and they're an expert in how they do it. And they could talk us through, you know, the privacy concern and also, you know, when they do step in and when they do alert people, how does all that process work? And so it might just be inviting them in for that conversation so we can hear it straight from them about how that works, you know, before we move down that road too far. Because I know that, I mean, we've had a lot of conversation around data sharing and all that piece. And so that's obviously a very contentious one. And we want to be, feel like we've vetted anybody that way very well and comfortable with working with them, so. So I'll add that to my list too, that we should, we need to consider next steps for that.
I do think, you know, all those, there's software up there, right? That's what it goes, right? And it's looking for keywords and things like that. It's not going out there and reading everything. It's not a person sitting there scrolling through somebody else's Facebook account. It's looking for key stuff, but then it does flags whatever it flags. And then it lands on someone to then evaluate it. So I think it's what that person does with that information.
Well, and it fits into the protocols based on what your.
It's really more Adam's area, so I didn't want to say too much, all right? The closest I can think of is when we get a FOIA request in and, you know, we use software. And so then it will flag anything that comes up with a certain phrase. So it's not like somebody's sitting there and is going through everyone's Chase Rady's emails for the last 18 months and would just look for a key phrase. But then there is a human element because depending on how broad the search is or what the phrase is, it might catch things that are germane to it, but then somebody does have to go through it. But that, it isn't somebody just sitting there accessing student accounts or wouldn't be on a daily basis. But we wouldn't get mad at, or not mad, you're mad, at them. Or someone else from outside does that to see how that would look.
Is it new software we need to buy or something?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, I mean, if it's going to do it continuously like that, I mean, we're not continuously running any of those monitors right now.
So next steps then, Matt, and are you a sort of point person at this point? Is we're trying to drag through these initial steps?
Yep. I mean, so next step I have are about moving on the community engagement portion, kind of with these three big chunks. And that looked, like I said, in multiple forms with community agencies as far as partnership efforts, liaison, identifying liaisons to the community groups. That's not just going to be me, right? I think that'll be a diverse team here. Research in other districts that have implemented, how they went about it. And like Kate said, there's a manual, but the manual only tells you so much, you know? I mean, what did they learn through their experience? much, you know, I mean, what did they learn through their experience, having a community meeting? And then, I think probably my suggestion would be that we would bring in a group like that to talk to you guys about the monitoring and alert piece, you know, and then that would probably help us inform how we've got that conversation with those community groups too, once we would all learn some more about it.
Yeah, and the food truck idea, I think we'd learn a ton by taking away the two district...
Yeah, I kind of missed what you guys were saying. You guys would be interested in hearing and being part of that too.
I prefer to excuse the word from here.
Remember, you could only take three?
Not the other.
This is a public meeting.
Oh, right, yeah.
So, would you, maybe, I mean, to help me organize this, I mean, would, I mean, I can create this on my own, but would it be helpful for you guys to see a timeline of how we plan to attack that work? I mean, it's kind of a follow-up here, and we could structure that out, and that would keep us on a course to do this? Okay.
That's fantastic.
And the other piece I heard was continue to refine the job responsibilities.
Yeah, kind of turn that into a form of job description, we can work on that.
You know, and we've had some conversation even at the board meeting a couple weeks ago, and then offline is, I like the idea of continuing to refine what the responsibilities are before we actually put it into a formalized job description, because once you put it in that form, it gets out there, people think that's exactly what it is, but as long as we continue to talk about it in terms of roles and responsibilities and build it out that way, I feel like people believe and feel that they have more ownership in being able to craft it, right? That they're not trying to just revise something that's there, and so, I would...
That's a great point, then we can classify by importance too, based on shots.
Right, we can do some of that reordering, so I would suggest we continue to refine that, knowing those roles and responsibilities, but not really put it into that format until we're ready to, to kind of, to kind of push it out.
Yeah.
But it still needs to continue to be a working part of the documents.
I think he's concerned that the salary, at least what's given in the grant, is not going to get you somebody that's got experience.
Yeah, and that's what I...
I mean, I, I personally would be looking for somebody that's very experienced in this, and is not gonna be coming in green, and that person is not gonna come in with that salary.
Maybe there's someone more...
Yeah, we could revisit that and see what their position is, what they're gonna pay.
You know, as we look at Stephen, our sidebar in a little bit, we could also, as we look at documents of other districts that do these things, we could kind of do a market analysis?
Yeah.
See what similar situated positions are, are uncompensated? Also, so it's getting to the ballpark, we might still decide that.
I wouldn't be in the same, looking at the same pool up there.
Right. So, just a starting point at least.
I would just, I agree that the number is not likely to get a very experienced person. I would just put it out there, that the bigger the number, the more stuff we're gonna have to offset somewhere else, right? We're gonna have to take something from somewhere, the bigger that number becomes. And, you know, it's already a balancing act of what we're spending on, and I'm just putting it out there, but just keep in mind, if you want to raise that number, it's gonna get something up.
Not even raising, not even raising the number, once the grant is there.
Yeah, I mean, I...
It's in there, so, absolutely.
So, how soon can we bring you back a timeline to give it update?
November twelfth.
Timeline shouldn't take us long, I mean, we could turn that around for the next meeting.
I think that's helpful, because I think then we can start setting expectations around our work, and we were trying to do a site visit, you know, giving clarity around, we would be going out to folks to have these conversations, I think, you know, on some holidays, we can make progress on this, and just being transparent about the processes and timeline, and as we step forward, I think getting a, just to...
I had a work session on the twelfth.
Next meeting?
Yep, twelfth, work session. Great.
Very good, I can address anything else? Anything else we have tonight, so, do we have much to turn? Go. On paper. Bye. That's enough. That's enough. That's enough. That's enough. That's enough.